Could I ask the committee to nominate somebody as chair? He says the chair is not here and he's saying these apologies.
I would like to propose councillor Alan Platon to take the chair.
Welcome to this Golf and View Committee. It's the sixth of September. Apologies, oh, do we have to do any closing stuff?
Yeah, just two years of fire alarm.
Apologies for absence.
From councillor Elysey, family committee members and councillors Brown and Laura, family analysis.
Who else is not present? Disclosure of interest, item number two, to deal with any disclosure by members, any disposable funeral interests, and interest other than funeral interests has to be found in emergency tangents or pro conduct, conduct and localism in relation to matters on the agenda. Does anybody have anything to add? Item number three, public participation. Do you have any questions or brief representation from members of the public according to standing order three in secret town council policy? Moving straight on to golf professionals' report. Thank you for your report. Would you like to just run us through the principle of that more?
Yeah, sure. Well, I think it's fairly explanatory perfectly. Run further through it. With regards to, we've had a good business out there. The weather in the first half of the year has had a new rate, it certainly sort of picked up. We've had some sort of dispel. We're never quite as happy, we're never as happy as golfers. Simon is in a rain, we wanted to look to be sunny and avoid all the perfect conditions, but I think we've done pretty good considering. Had an interesting industry statistic from one of our reps that came around the other day. Apparently in South East of Asia, they see things down on last year at the same, at this time, adult green feed. You know, so we're talking walking people off the street. Not including society members just purely playing golfers. That does include a couple of golfers that have shut down, so that's going to affect figures slightly too. However, we are showing a slight increase on that side of things. Yeah, well, I think down to a couple of courses closing, but also just, I think a lot of the courses earlier in the year were struggling with the wet. A lot of courses were closed for seven months. Once it stops raining, it does rain particularly in the west. So we had more people playing throughout the year, so I think at eight o'clock, a lot was a catch-up. As the weather improved.
I note that you're providing a great incentive for new people joining, obviously particularly golfers. And it struck me that it's a little like the children's company, as far as there's no loyalty for, there's no incentive to be loyal. So you're offering new members discount, possibly a discount to them. But people who are loyal, there's no incentive. I wonder whether that could be some sort of, if you're a member for three years, you get a discount for the fourth year.
Well, we were looking at actually trying to incentivise the current members to bring in new members by helping monitor the rewards. This is something we discussed earlier in the year to be at war the following year. So we're sort of saying, we've got fifteen pounds, ten pounds if they can't behind the bar if they introduce a new member to the golf club. So trying to help get a minister, help us a little bit to get some new ones and also keep the club thriving as well. Is that being actively taken forward? Yes, well, that will come in for the second report for the one recommendation for new chairs, memberships and secret tickets.
And following on from that, you mentioned in 1.3 that two people who left from top courses have come back. Do they leave and come back because they get a discount when they come back? So every other year they rotate courses?
No, the gentleman I was talking about particularly, there was a group of young guys, also in their late twenties that were members here. They'd been members here for a few years and they live in East Lincoln and they decided, there was no negative side of it. They just decided they wanted to change and they went to, it was quite a hard thing, they were there for a few months. They kept on after they were back here last night. They came back and sort of thought they'd made a mistake because they enjoyed it more here. But they didn't know that until they went away and then they've come back. So they didn't do it to take advantage of the...
They're getting a discussion on that.
Um... Well, potentially, if they're...
It's a bit of a class of humanism, isn't it?
Yeah.
And just one other thing on the report. You mentioned that the buggies have been around a lot.
Yes.
And they seem to look at fees, it looks as though they're paying 100% profit on the buggies, which is a problem. But then in the Green Key Green Keys report, references made to the added costs of maintaining the greens because of the buggies. And I just wondered whether or not, I only probably looked at the additional costs of maintaining the green, but fairway, where the buggies go, and the additional costs associated with that can now be offset against the profits made.
Yeah, that's something for us to consider for the budget.
I presume the buggies don't cause a horrendous problem on the fairways as well.
Generally, fairways not so much. It's all the farmy areas basically, where they head towards greens or head towards tees. This course wasn't, or never had been set out for buggy use. Since they've been used, they've started to create their own routes. And at some point, we kind of progressed easy to have bought and built the paths for tracks or a fairing after, or a new pedestrian, now buggy use. But it's something that...
And the buggies have been there just over a year.
They're obviously doing very well, but it's a question of being aware of that additional cost.
There's certainly areas, something like first, where we go around, that pathway's been proved around activating, starting at the beginning of the year, but it's more grounded down. It's those kind of areas, it's not sort of, we wouldn't say it's the whole course, but it's certain areas like Tom says, it's where they farm in and where they're, you know...
Causing wear basically.
So that's something, this I'm talking about, looking forward to regards to doing some better pathways, like the first, in areas that we need to do.
I think the biggest issue going forward will be if we hope to keep good money coming in from the buggies, using them later on to really really grab this soft time. That's where we're going to have to start re-grouping and providing hard security for them to use. Just to keep weather off the playing surface.
Clearly you want to encourage stakeholders as long as possible.
Yeah. I mean, at some point, I'll be looking for different things, I would...
Yeah, exactly. Well, sometimes you talk to each other, it's on the agenda.
That works well, because if I push one way, it's actually, the big unit will sort of work, you know, it's not going too far one way. Because if we force it out too much, then we get too much wear and so it keeps it back there, we have to somewhere in the middle of that, we find a...
But what we want to see is that the profitability remains.
Yes, exactly. I mean, that's again, that's very good, we got quite wet last year, quite early I think, and they ended up going off quite quickly. And revenge for a long time, so we did it just for a few months last year. So hopefully we can quickly, either end of that, we can squeeze in a little bit, hopefully there is still...
That's good. And the name of the reputation of the course is going from strength to strength, that seems...
Lots of calls back from not only company reps, but from societies and people around the society here that hear about the course. There's also people that have actually gone, I've heard that they've played it, so they've come back and that kind of stuff. So that's going with the social media side of stuff.
And so you projected income overall, which is now about £10,000 on last year? That's good. Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to, sorry, yes, councillor Woodstock.
I've got three points, shall I take them one at a time? The first one is, we don't seem to have budgeted enough insurance. Is there any particular one? Page six. For double one five.
Yeah, that was, it was the new ten that I've got for insurance. Some things, we actually made a whole policy, we managed to have about nine thousand pounds. So some went down a lot, which I think includes the view, I can't really fix the view, I think that went down quite a bit. Yeah, we had a budget of six thousand five hundred and it was only one nine nine five. So the insurance premiums didn't affect the budgets in a lot of ways, but the net result was we got all the one I wrote for the course, yeah. The buggies was one issue, the place that the insurer saved them. And it wasn't thousands of pounds, it was a few hundred pounds additional. I think as well the storage and the chamber, perhaps you've probably insured before. That's why we declared a full loss to the value that we had as well.
Just when you do a review, sometimes you spot things haven't been done. Some of it's in the fair, in terms of your premium, and some of it's not.
But overall?
Overall, we managed to have about nine thousand on insurance as a captain. It's reliable, it's around nine thousand less than the usual.
My second point is the falling membership. You pointed out in your report that this is a national thing. Is it likely to continue, you're saying, or is that looking too far?
Yeah, unfortunately we're finding it's a demographic we've seen for one point. We've got, talking to people around the industry, they think it's not quite at the bottom of the curve with regards to membership of golf. Not far off it, I don't think it's quite bottomed out yet. Purely because people play golf differently, it's down to time, money, and with everything, I suppose, the uncertainty of everything that's gone on politically in the last year as well. All of those things have helped over the recession we had before. People, you know, I remember being twelve years ago at five o'clock at night, comes Friday, we were really busy. Now, because everybody bumped off work on Friday and come and play golf, people don't do that anymore. Because job security is not in place as much as it is. And that's the bulk of the people that we don't have being members are the working part of the golf course. You know, average membership is sixty-five age-wise. And we have a natural drop-off every year of maybe twenty or thirty people. Well, that's a lot of golfers, new golfers to find every year before you start seeing that curve heading up the other way. And that's being found out at the golf course as well. And therefore we hit worse than we are because of our demographic, we've got retired people to be able to play golf. Whereas if you go somewhere nearer to London, where the population is more of the working age, they're actually getting hit a lot more with less intervention than we are here. So although we can buffer it a little bit, it's hopefully going to...
And they tune the under forward gears.
Yes, yeah, I mean, I think we can incentivise them as much as possible, because I think a lot of it comes down more to time than it does to money. And with regards to what we're having in regard to societies and green feeds, we're seeing that that side of the golfing is being made up the other way. So yes, we have five hundred members, but you'd see a significant drop-off in the walking golfers and societies. You'd be a bit different, of course, because, you know, we've got members. So it's a balancing act in a way.
Following on from that, do you feel that it is a question of time to play around? So is there a possibility of paying for a minor round, half a round, rather than progress?
Yes, that's what we brought in the, the twilight break in the evening. Yeah, and we do that at two or four o'clock, so later in the afternoon, you know, people can play less than they like, for this rate.
Is that down to time as well?
Yes, it's on the...
And the final item that I had is on page seven, one O eight O. Income content, I just wonder what went off that we haven't got. We budgeted a thousand one hundred thousand and we haven't got anything.
I'm not sure that was to be honest with you at the time. It needs to have been, and that one thing I can tell you is that today we've been looking into costs under four two seven one, which we've got twenty thousand pounds included, about twenty one thousand included there. That's for the equipment base. Last year we bought half of the equipment base for about nine hundred pounds. So we're only expecting to pay out about, you know, about twenty thousand this year. But we've just put in a raise to buy the rest of the leased equipment for about eight hundred pounds. So this year we'll only be paying eight hundred pounds over that budget, so we're saving about twenty thousand. So that's going to help us go through the year. The rationale is that it's going to cost us a bit or a lot, but that's going to make a significant difference to the expenditure side of things.
Any other guess?
Just come back on membership.
Yes.
This is just out of interest. One of the societies we live in, the old course, go back three years, there's been two of the members. Because of age, not playing, and going, that society is down to twenty-two. It shows you the age span that's cut, it's probably only elderly some day. And what sort of chance has that's always set is to get some younger people. Just out of interest, that is, as we are always doing, to get new members, if you see anybody who's liked the grass, you can get that here.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on to the report. Would you like to summarise the main points?
Yep, no problem. I think the course has powered up pretty well this year. Feel this place will go on. Yep, the course is held well. We started with slower temperatures, struggling to get a growth, trying to get a definition. Everything's forward to place now for the summer. People have been free and happy, got good visitors, doing what seems to be what we're hard and producing what I believe is the most comfortable sort of people to play. I still wear around in the sea, a bit to go around, but I think if I don't see them, they're...
So the road is under control?
Under control, maybe not. The numbers are the best. We're working on controlling them. A lot of work we did in the winter of clearing areas, did also flush some amount of potential scrub areas, which has helped. There was a lot of scrub, closer tees, closer greens, the open nature, visual and clearing. Whereas there was a little pot for them to get from their safety to somewhere which is quite important now. They try to expand to the countryside, working on that a bit more. Flu wells have now been engulfed by breaking again quite heavily. We hope in the over the next few years of clearing that, along with other rough areas, we're going to fill it out, get some more wildflowers. One interesting field, I've been speaking to a company that can choose us or blend the wildflower seeds, which I'd like to pursue a bit further. Working with Sussex Oil, hopefully they can guide me in the right direction, which needs to get a sense of the area. And Beatrice and I, we can't just introduce any of that, but we may be in the vision in the winter to get a mix named after Seaverhead. Perhaps we have a Seaverhead wildflower mix that we could use then. We'll try to sell it out here, get a good display. All our works have gone well, pretty here, feeding fertiliser to our dressing. We can get a litter and often approach, which is all happening as well. And greens have been quite consistent because of it, all the same little introductions to golfers in terms of stables, that's what we're aiming for. The team, we will joust together very well now. The shortest person's been here six months, the shortest period of time, he's well anticipated now, out of my deputy, Paul Royall. Unfortunately, farthest from it, which is not an easy thing to find. And we're looking to get a good team, see if possible, to get him through that. Working on machinery sort of things, there was mentioned that purchase of machinery for this. The programme is being brought up, or the machinery that I'm getting priced for this, it's a big investment, machinery we have. And being the small team that we are, we need them to all be working to the full, which will be time for them to go down. They think more of this because of their age. I'm a qualified mechanic, so I've kept it running pretty well. But over the next few years, we're going to have to have a program in place and replace in certain ones. Just come to a time where we've got a replacement program in place over five year or seven year period, a rolling program. Which is what has happened with the leasing. Obviously we've bought most of the membership, so it's working out which one we want to replace on, maybe tomorrow. The machinery store, replacement, I've worked with Craig, the end worker manager. We've collected, the information I've collected, and he's now produced the program, the timeframe, and I've checked everything in place. I think we're ready to start that program, we live outside. We think the budget is set, I believe the settlement will be completed at some point.
What's the time course for completing the store?
I think it's about five week program. Yeah, dispensing metrics to get everyone to give us a point program tonight.
Other questions? The only question I have, but the topic's got to be addressed already. Councillor Freeman.
I noticed there were some correspondence asked about the thistle seeds. Is there anything done to do with that, or is it just... I mean, I live, my garden's back in Alanya, it's sorts of, I'm a bit complex, I know it's where I live. Obviously, the thistle seeds blowing all over the gardens seem to intensely irritate us sometimes. I think it sounds... Should we say this is for the water?
Yeah, I would like to, gentlemen, any questions on the first instance? With what I felt was quite a reasonable program in terms of what we're looking to achieve here. We're a very sensitive side with nature, insects, wildflowers. I haven't, and don't intend to use any purpose on this one, of course. The only one I have here is a little hand up that you might pick here, on certain areas around the end of squad, continue to use. And that, as they're ranking, that will last us. And in the future, a few years, we might even be banned, anyway, we're going to be ahead of the game. Much like the pesticides that have already been banned, we were ahead of the game. I've got courses now coming to wait, wondering what they're going to do. We've, we've never, it's kind of a niche, haven't had heat as well.
If you've got asbestos or soot on the pipeline...
The only, I mean, when I put my program together before I started here, I wanted to clear rough areas, clear scrub areas. And that involved hiring a machine that cuts and collects the waste, so we can, rather than just cut it, let it all wash down and come back the next year. And that's quite a sustainable way of doing it, but it takes a few years to build that, to clear it out and fit it out. And that's, that's the plan for the next few years, or every year, that's all I'm here. I think that is acceptable and doing it for our site.
So your reply to the gentleman, so, I wasn't happy with your reply? My god, that... Do you want to go to any more details on that?
Well, at that point I forwarded the reply on to the Fraser James. That point James, to make a request.
And we've given a confirmed response to Simon, gave an explanation. We, you know, we have to operate that way because we have the concentration, how we're not going to use it just for someone. As an issue of an extra net reserve of thistles that we can't change the operation of all cars. It's unfortunate for his garden, but the priority is the integrity of what he knows.
Does it lift down when you're up when you...
Definitely down, from the way it's scored. But, you know, we've given him an answer that we will, as Simon said, that it is going to be killed out really naturally. He is... So it will be dealt with. Yeah, but, you know, he's very blinkered and just thinking about himself and nobody else, he just wants it done for his bits. Of course, if you do it just for his bits, then other people are going to say, what about mine bits? So you could have maybe, with the stop after the golf course, suspended some, getting rid of thistles.
The point to it, the area that he made concerns with is an area that in my sixteen years here, has never touched. And moving forwards, it's certainly an area we're going to get into and clear, but it's going to take time. We've got over three hundred hectares in it. It's going to take a few years to get around to all these areas, but there's a program in place to do that.
All right. Thank you, Simon. Oh, sorry, absolutely.
Can I just say, I drive up and down Cheaton Road three or four times a day. That's an exaggeration, two or three per day. And can I say, in spite of the variety of weather, the hardness of the water, I think the course has looked very good all the years.
Can't do anything else, though. Any other questions for Green Key?
Just a feedback point. Obviously I did a bit of a feedback for the course, both now coming here, just on the daily basis. And also a few remarks before we come to the council. And the feedback is, it's on the roll, it's very, very positive. I only negged the feedback for a considerable amount of time, a thousand thistles.
Got them, hasn't it?
Yes. That's also one way of... Feedback tended to plug in the course, it's...
We're making as much of that as we can in the marketing.
Yeah, we set up a new, we've got somebody starting work and doing the marketing for the year. Pretty useful for some time, the marketing for next year, for next year's season tickets. And we're going to, we're going to...
for, for next year's season tickets, and we're gonna, we're gonna get these USPs in, that's gonna train, emphasize what we do off there. Um, so we can not to increase our interest in the strategy, so, um, to talk about that.
Did you, other open days, um, with respect to marking advantage, do they have to trial the course before they're done?
There's a potential, some, some courses do do that, um, generally, courses that do that have two courses, so they use one for the open day, while the.
Well, we haven't particularly gone on this.
You can, and, and, say, say a bit of a quick, please.
Yeah.
Have pre-made one, so, yeah.
Just thinking about that.
But no, it is something that's, I think, um, on the, on the top of my list as well.
Thank you, Robert, so, um, moving on to letter number six, um, Robert, if you'd like to summarize where we are, kind of things to go. Before, uh, before you do, um, you have the figures for this.
Yes. I'm just watching after the moon.
Right, have, have you digested?
Um.
Excuse me.
I would, I would, I would probably not, I haven't lived with them on some events, I don't have the, um, I have a lot of percentages.
Well, take us through then, and tap up, and give us some interpretation of the business.
Okay, so, um, presently, we are, we're doing, we're doing well, um, lots of room for improvement. But, um, generally on our costings, um, we've made significant savings, um, on our expenditure. And in addition to that, we've also, um, managed to increase present, so, um, that's very positive going forward. And, but of course, there have been the, um, the busy of months, so you'd expect we're trading, um, far better then. Um, obviously, a far better, a more accurate perception will be reached December, and has created double terms for October, November, and December. Even though you have the, the, um, so Christmas parties as well, so, um, hopefully we get through that in January and February. Um, again, tend to be quiet, but there are various, various plans and motions, as it were, um, um, to try and end up with that. Um, our staff, and we've had a good, a good run of staff over, over the summer, we've had quite a large bang of staff. And which is necessary because obviously other staff take holidays, and there are sick days, there are an awful lot of functions. And, you know, Saturdays, for instance, we quite often start at seven o'clock in the morning, and we finish at one o'clock the following morning. It's an eighteen hour day to staff, and, and of course, there's legal requirements for people to break. And it's not only return to work, eleven hours after they've left work, and various other, um, restrictions. And it wasn't necessarily evil, as it were, to have a large, um, a large group of staff. And, but generally, they've all performed very well, um, and we've got busy September ahead of us, so we're looking too much. And changes there, obviously come up too much, and the salaries, um, and, and the wages will drop in line with our income. Um, so we lost a, um, our second chef effectively, has moved on, he, he did very well last Christmas, he was here pretty much by himself. And covered a lot of functions, he did very well, he's only young, um, but he did very well, but he's, um, he's left to pursue a career and find diamond. So he's working, um, eighteen hour days at the moment, he's enjoying it tremendously and learning a great deal. So, um, as I say, ma- ma- many thanks to him, um. And, and Sarah's also left us, um, unfortunately, um, so we've been able to replace her relatively quickly. Um, and we hope, um, with that, Sarah tells Fiona, Fiona Heflin, she started last week with us, um, who's just been doing, um, a couple of hours here and there at the moment. Um, however, as of next week, she will be with us a lot more, and we can develop our marketing strategy with the forward, particularly for Christmas. Um, and that's all good, really, as we are at the moment. Um, our new menus are launched at the start of this month, after many, many, many delays for various reasons. Um, including our fridge, uh, our, our freezer breaking down, um, and having to replace that, that took a couple of weeks to get that done. But, um, generally, um, they've gone down very well, most people seem, um, the, the feedback we've had has been very positive. And unfortunately, when you do change menus, there will obviously be items that have taken off menus that people liked, and unfortunately, we don't do any of that for various reasons. A lot of this to do with the costings, um, the static menu, the previous menu that we had, um, wasn't very well costed at all. A lot of the items on there, whilst we might sell quite a few of them, who weren't actually making profit margin, so we opted. And so it's, it's far easier to remove items rather than increase the cost, because it's very difficult to explain to people. Though we actually put twice that out by two pounds, but it was too cheap, people don't bode well with that. Whereas if, if you actually remove them, and then you can reintroduce them in the spring, at slightly higher cost to cover the profit margins, then that tends to work better. So, um, as I say, um, we've tried to put something on there for everyone, but again, very, very difficult to keep everybody happy, particularly when it comes to menus. So, um, the, the, the general feedback has been very positive, so, um, very pleased about that. Um, social media, so in the last, um, two or three months, there's been a lot, um, a lot of comments and various other things on various groups and Seaford and so on. Some of it's quite old, um, related to before, um, we were sending the opening hours, so a lot of it related to May, four May. And so maybe January, February, um, because of the lack of information, um, available to the public regarding opening times, um, menus, and what we're trying to achieve up here, um, but that should all be rectified this month, once we have the, um, website up and running. I was speaking with a developer today, and, and that's all moving forward very well, and we're just in the process of writing some text to go onto the new website. And we're arranging to have some new photographs taken, and so once that's done, we can then place a link in a lot of social media groups and forums. People can just click on that, they can also contact us directly, if they have questions or complaints that they may have. And, and it will keep them informed of forthcoming events, when the menus are changing, and all sorts of information. So hopefully, that should give us a bigger presence, not just within Seaford, but, um, to keep Sussex at the heart, and hopefully, um, attract more customers. Um, so functions and marketing, um, we have, um, sort of muddling through the moment with that Sarah. And obviously, she's taken, um, a large number of bookings, which we are quite happy with, um, I'm dealing with. And Rebecca's doing, um, who is the admin assistant up here, she's taken the majority of bookings, but I'm also doing them, as is my assistant manager, Alan. So there are three of us doing bookings at the moment, um, and particularly in the last week, we've probably taken about half a dozen additional ones. So we are continually getting, um, questions and so forth of that. And we are looking to get a wedding brochure produced, now that we've got Fiona on board, and hopefully we'll move a lot quicker with that. There's obviously people, um, requesting we send about the wedding information, and at the moment, we have the wedding menus, and that's basically it. Um, attendance is something that needs to be looked at, and we are currently trying to find ways to do it, whether we just use stock pictures, which are just pictures, which are, um, companies only, and copyright for them, and it's just images as opposed to specific things that happen up here. Um, because it's very difficult to do, because you have to give permission and various other things, so we, we are looking at various ways of doing it. But what we don't want to do is release a brochure, and it's very hazardous, and put together very quickly, because of course, that can be quite damaging to potential customers. So much rather say, to be honest, at this moment in time, we are collecting a brochure, but we don't have one real book standard at the moment. Because it's much better, they get a better product that showcases what we can do here, as opposed to something that's just put together as it were. Um, so we've had a huge, um, huge number of societies over the summer, um, as Fraser related to, and, and they're all going very well. And there've been very positive feedback we've had regarding foods, uh, and particularly, of course, a lot of good feedback from members and visiting societies. Saying how well it's playing, and how well it looks, so it all done with Simon again, it's, um, all, all part of the package that we're trying to do up here. And I think it's all going, going very well. Um, so generally, we are, we're in a pretty good place, and our Christmas menus are done. And we've got, um, autumn coming up, we're going to try a supper club on Friday evenings, and we'll do that for three Fridays. On the fourth Friday, we're going to add live music, um, to try and attract less than four Seafords, and perhaps further afield. And we're also going to do a, um, food promotion before the band starts, so that people can just finish work or whatever, come up here, they can eat. And then you can watch the band, go to, go to, get changed, and just come up and listen to the music. Obviously, there's no point in selling food while the band are on, that can not do work very well. And so we'll do a sort of word of offer, and we're going to launch a steak night in October as well, which will be a promotion for, um, two steaks, chips, and a bottle of wine. And there'll also be a science menu, where you can get various sauces, salads, olive bread, onion rings, all that sort of thing, to try and increase the spend. So, um, we're still chasing, um, hopefully, the members flying up the number tonight, although it's, it's quite a difficult task, there are lots of little groups. Um, and as opposed to us just saying, this is what we want to do, and nobody wants to do that, and nobody wants to turn that, it'd be far better if the members suggest what they would like to see up here, and then we see how we can facilitate that for them, and then that way, at least there's already an interest before the event starts. Um, so that's just, um, just some of the ideas as we go along. Um, I'm very pleased with the menus because they are all printed in house, and, so we have much greater flexibility, um, and we can, and obviously reflect the seasonal changes in that. So in the winter, we like to get a lot of pies on stews and things, to try and touch people up again. And we're also looking at purchasing a panini machine, so that in the, in the winter, we'll be doing soup and paninis. This is obviously a warm sandwich to, to people, to golfers and, and other people, just to come up for a warm batch, because they're cold sandwiches, so. Um, we are moving on, and generally, things are, things are quite favorable.
Thank you very much, Robert, um, you said at the beginning, but, uh, most of the improvements so far has been due to cost saving.
Yes.
Um, it's all really down to marketing, because cost savings have been made, so presumably, what we've just discovered, certainly will go through.
Yes, I'm, 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 the, 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 the general situation is that we are, and we, we're doing well, we could be doing better. Although, you know, we've had certain, not restraints as it were, but we, we haven't had the information available to people. So at, at this moment in time, considering what we've had, we're doing very well. Um, the, the big push with the website, the flexibility of the menus and so on, hopefully, should push us through this, yeah. And that should, um, that should certainly, well, I'm, I'm, I'm confident we'll have an increase, um, in revenue compared to, and marketing or anywhere. But it's, um, hopefully, it's only even.
We've just had to turn back, um, to go back to August, it's only a sign of that, going through here.
Um, yeah, the, uh, the income for August is, is, uh, slightly better than July, it's, um, forty-four thousand two hundred and ninety. Um, the expenditure is less, it's thirty-three nine nine nine, um, so that gives a net profit of ten thousand three hundred for the month. Um, I do want to give one big caveat, though, is that, if you look at the, um, on the expenditure, our biggest expenditure item, apart from salaries, is, uh, four three zero one. Part of the work's all repayment, um, at the moment, we only paid sixteen thousand and one hundred and fifty-five thousand in a five month period. That's just where the overall repayments have fallen, so on a pro ride basis, we won't do, um, what we would be pro ride if we paid even more for the year. It comes in six month tranches, um, I know we've got something coming out in September, um, because of that, the, the notifications. So that, that skews the figures slightly, uh, in that position for the year so far, um, we should be looking at some expenses. Some memories about fair, fair thousand pounds on those figures at this time of year. Um, so that would read as roughly at this time of year at the moment, is in a position where we, we're running a slight loss of about, uh, twenty thousand. Um, which is not, uh, the end of the world compared to where we were last year, uh, this time last year, we were, um, in a position where we're running a loss of about, um, eighty-five thousand, um, so significantly better than where we were last year.
Very, very fortunate, any questions for, um, for, for Robert?
Um, one, I notice the wages are well down, uh, and everything. Um, subcontracted staff is obviously up, it was obviously more building, phrases there, but do we have to pay national insurance, um, and so on? And subcontracted staff, no?
No. So. And, and, and that, that, that generally relates to, um, the head chef. And the head chef has not contracted to us, and he's not really keen to be a rider, and we're very, very fortunate, and, and he's an extremely good chef. He's a brave and temperate, and he's also, um, kindly stated that in, in the winter, um, he's quite happy to work four days. If the trade drops down to such a level as opposed to being a wild day, um, he, he's a keen carp fisherman, and he said he'd be quite happily put around and doing other things with the day, so he's no, I mean, that was at his suggestion, and for his hours. So he, he is aware of the cost of the business, and that's also what noted that he is, and that, that's the driving force for the kitchen, and, and producing extremely good food. So, um, he, he is a big asset, we're not paying over the odds for him at all, um, and he is, he's very flexible. So, um, the fact that he's not contracted, um, obviously, he will collect a rise as he invoices us for the hours he does per month, I mean.
Any other questions for the rest of them, but I do, sir?
Just like to say that the golfers welcome rocks, new, new menus, and, uh, a little positive attitude for the zone. We continue to try to get about new new functions, but maybe the age is difficult to get the, uh, help we numbers, area sixty-five, uh, the, we can try, if you'd like to write a quiz.
Yeah, but this is that, um, I've, I've spoken to various societies and said, like, what would you like? You know, just had some suggestions, you know, there's very, there, there isn't any, and I was pointing out earlier, that there's no point in saying, I meant to be a question, and a curve, and nine people turn up. Because they're not interested in doing it, so.
That's a problem.
If it comes from them, then that's been, will facilitate.
Yes, that's all, sir.
One point that, um, we seem to have set our budget figures on income, page sixteen, the thirteen hundreds, uh, uh, we seem to have set our, um, budget figures very high, and we've got nowhere near achieving them. On the other hand, air costs are similarly lower.
Which, which number, sorry?
Um, page sixteen, thirteen oh five, thirteen oh six, thirteen oh seven, and so on, who set their budget figures very high. Which appears to, you know, show a very adverse variance there, that, um, on the other hand, air, air costs are lower.
Um, the, the, um, I would, I, I would confidently say, I mean, we're, we're four months in at the moment. And, and, you know, if, if, if we can, we won't continue, but I would be, I'd be confident of reaching, and definitely exceeding the, the food sales. The food sales, including August at the moment, um, we are on, um, a hundred and five thousand pounds on food income. And that's in five months, we're already over fifty percent of the target.
Very good.
And the bar income, the August figures at the moment, is eighty-one thousand six hundred and fifty-nine pounds. So again, um, we, we are actually on track to meet, if not exceed, both the, both the targets that have been set. Um, plus, as you correctly pointed out, with the, um, um, we, we should well under. To meet, if not exceed, both the, both the targets that have been set, um, plus, as you correctly pointed out, with the, um, um, we, we should come well under budget for the expenditure for both the bar and the restaurant. And so generally, we're, we're, we're in pretty good shape, I think, I, I'd, I'd be very happy if we are, um, able to, to finish the year on a twenty percent increase in revenue. Um, for the bar and kitchen, and thirty percent saving on income, I think would be, I'd be very good, I'd be very pleased with that for the year, um, for being here generally. Um, and as, as we discussed earlier, hopefully, with the website and so on, um, and having everything in place for next spring, which obviously, I started in the spring, so I was able to, to, uh. Initiate program plan with the marketing and the staff and various others, and so hopefully, come sort of Mother's Day, that's, that's when we'd like to sort of launch ourselves for the next six months. And, and capitalize upon this year's figures next year, and, and see it grow year on year.
May I just commend the staff, a hard work.
You're right, you know, I'd certainly like to, so, I think we're feeling the same, I think you're doing a fantastic job, um, it's been very difficult turning, turning around the, um, to get the view, but, uh, in general, I'm trying to do very well. Um, any other questions for Robert? Um, before we close, I might want to do this.
Because of you, I'm taking.
Oh, I don't know, okay, and Men's Charity Golf Day, um, held on Tuesday, I think you've all got the figures in front of you, and I think we should congratulate the staff under there. For a fantastic, I'm confident, it's a lovely day, isn't it, um, otherwise, but also to have seven to cost golfers taking the card, and for, this is again, the raffle, the, the draw, the, uh, the auction. Uh, and the buffet lunch all went incredibly well, and the net, um, result was that there's seven hundred and thirty-seven pound seventy, uh, for the R and R, and wasted strays, so well done, everybody. Fantastic, fantastic, uh, so, um, what I'm doing on the business, I'll, um, I think that concludes the meeting, thank you very much.